Good evening, everyone. We're going to start, go into executive session. It's Tuesday, May 2, 2023, and we're going to discuss 2.1 negotiations matter, 2.2 legal matter, and CSEA, and 2.3 legal matter district. And the time is 7:05. 7:05. Can I have a motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor? Thanks, and we'll see you shortly. Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for coming tonight. This is one of our favorite nights of the year for the board, and we're going to celebrate all of you very soon. We just have to do a little business beforehand. So if, let's see, we entered into exec session this evening at 7:05, and we discussed 2.1 negotiation matter, 2.2 legal matter, and 2. CSEA, and 2.3 legal matter district. And the time now is 7:46. And it is Tuesday, May 2, 2023. And, here. Okay, and then, I'm sorry, there is an amendment tonight to the agenda. We also discussed in exec, 2.4 contract matter individual employee. So can I ask everyone to rise for the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And then, I can just have a motion to amend tonight's agenda? And a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Thank you. And then, I can have a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda. 6.1, hold on one second, personnel, and 7.1 special services, and 8.1 consent agenda business.
Second.
All those in favor? Something special just happened on our consent agenda for personnel. I understand that we have a couple of appointments of new faculty here tonight, and they are here in the audience, so I would like to take a moment to welcome them. We have Marissa Mitchell. Marissa, are you here? Great, welcome. You're going to be blown away tonight, and you're going to know that you made the right decision to come to Byram Hills. I'm so happy to have you here celebrating in this night with us, and also celebrating a long future, hopefully with Byram Hills, where you feel like you can learn and grow. So, welcome to you. We also have Nicole Galvand. Welcome to Nicole. Marissa, by the way, is going to be at Wampis, and Nicole is going to be at Coman Hill. And then Abby Palito. Abby, welcome. Abby will be our school counselor at Coman Hill. So I want to just send a warm welcome to all of you, and I'm grateful that tonight you're here to help us celebrate our students. So, welcome to Byram. Okay. So that moves us on to our special report this evening, and it is the recognition of the 2022-2023 Authentic Science Research seniors and our Regeneron top scholars. And what a privilege it is to have you all here tonight to all the seniors, their parents, their grandparents, and of course, the great thanks to Ms. Greenwald, Dr. Matthew, to Ms. Salamone and Ms. Santini, who run this amazing program. You know, starting on the board many years ago, I would sit at this night, and I would be so excited to hear about all of the wonderful projects and research that the students were doing. And like Jen and I would say, sometimes they'd come up and they, you know, students would say there are topics, and we would just look at each other and be other in awe about what we were hearing, and just the things that you discover and study along the way in this wonderful program. It just is, it leaves us in amazement. And having a senior go through it and following along has really, I can now empathize with all of the things that you've all gone through and all the students before, all these years that I've listened to. It is just a wonderful program. It is very, very special. I had the opportunity to sit with some seniors recently for lunch, and two of the seniors were part of the program. And I asked, what was, just a general question, what was a wonderful experience that you had during your years at Byram? What stands out for you? What made an impact? And Senior Remi Matza said, you know, science research immediately. And she said that what I loved most about it is the sense of community and the friendships that you make and the support that you get. And the fact that it is a, you know, it's kids of all ages in the high school, so it's, you know, 9th graders applying to the program, and it's the 10th graders and the 11th graders and the 12th. And how we all support one another. And then beyond that, she said, there's a wall of alumni photos and what they're, you know, they catch up, they return to school, and they put what they're doing now, and it helps the current science research students, you know, helps them be inspired. And, you know, Remi wants to maybe go into medicine, and she reads about all the different, sorry, I just called you out. But, you know, I just love that. And then just hearing about the different traditions when you get your mentor, how exciting that is. And you write your name on the wall, and that was a very, you know, favorite moment for Emily. And, sorry to call you out too. But just everything that's done in the program is really amazing. And, you know, you learn all life skills as well. You learn how to do these elevator pitches, and you learn to persevere through, you know, adversity when you don't get the mentor that you were hoping to get. And there's challenges when you're, you know, your research, it has to take, you know, pivot at very late in the stage. And those are life skills that will follow you forever. So I think that it's just a wonderful way to enter into your college years and whatever else is ahead of you. And we're very, very happy and privileged to recognize you all and celebrate you all tonight. So I would like to start with the festivities. And before I do so, I would like to thank Stephanie Greenwald, the director of this program, who we came to a number of years ago and asked how she felt about taking over this program. And she had already started preparing for the program, so that was pretty much an easy yes. But she has remained dedicated to the program since and has single-handedly helped it to evolve, right? This is a vision that she has shared with people in her department, has talked to people in science research everywhere else. And I have to say that when I talk about Byram Hills, I talk about science research as being one of our most distinguished programs. And it truly is. Not only because of the energy that's put into it on the administrative teacher side, but also on the student's side. So Stephanie, I want to thank you for, I can be leaving here at an early hour for a superintendent, but a very late hour for a teacher, and I still might drive by and see Stephanie in that room, right? So I know the countless hours you put into this, and it's really a passion for you. Oh, I'm going down the line, don't you worry. Next, I want to talk about Rhonda. Rhonda was a gift when she came to Byram Hills. She immediately fell in love with the science research program, and although we could have used her in a number of places, she is part-time in the science research program and part-time somewhere else, because I will never let her leave science research. Her dedication to that program, the organization, she is controlling the ins and outs of that organization on a daily basis, and so beautifully, and with such care, and without a single mistake. I'm not sure quite how you do it. But Rhonda, thank you so much. We're so excited that you're continuing with this program as well. Megan Salamone, one of by far the strongest English teachers in the district, decided at some point to take a little bit of a jump. She still teaches some English classes, but to become an official reader and helper in science research to develop these papers, these arduous papers that you all spent so much time on. Can you only imagine what it's like to be Ms. Salamone, reading all of your work over and over again and being able to stitch something you wrote in the beginning to something at the end to make sure that you continued with this thought process and idea to its fruition? So Megan, thank you so much for that. I'm not sure if our vision insurance covers you for any of the damages that have been done for all of this reading. But I think also you've been enriched by this writing, which is professionally rewarding for a teacher. So know that even though she's doing that work for you, you're also professionally rewarding her. And Dr. Caroline Matthews, when you first came here, I said, oh my, someone who has done research like this at a grand scale, how effective that's going to be for our kids, so that they really understand the difference between types of research and what tests you can do in specific types of research. You, this crew together, I can't imagine any of you ever leaving. Nobody has permission. But I just want to say that that's where all of this good work stems from. You give them opportunities. And it is what I always hope for as a superintendent in this district, that any opportunity that you can have and you want to pursue, that we are able to provide that for you. And that means that so many of you had topics from completely different angles, right? We're having to cover things from social media to marine life, to anything else, psychology, to the brain and traumatic brain injuries. I mean, it just runs the gamut of what things you've been able to explore and spend that time on. There are a very limited number of students in the country who are high school students who are able to do what you did, not only because their schools may not provide them, because those students don't have the support to help see them through it. Your parents have probably spent countless hours watching you, talking to you about your research, perhaps even reading your papers, being that kind of mentor at home to help you through this process as well. But I want you to give yourselves credit. You made it through this program. You made it through successfully. I went to some of the presentations, and you were perfectly fine presenting to the superintendent of schools. I was fascinated by your presentation skills and the topics that you were talking about. And this is just something that, in the rest of your life, it's going to serve you. This has been your training, quote unquote. Some of you are going to take these ideas and carry them forward even, or you may come back to these ideas at a later time in your life and want to work on them more. But it thrills me that you had that opportunity, and I want to thank you, first of all, for making us look oh-so-good, because you know you did. And secondly, for understanding that community. When Laris Stangle was talking about the community that Remi was speaking about, I actually saw Chloe stick her hand behind her and hold Remi's hand, right? And this is, these things don't go unnoticed. The support that you have for each other and understanding in any work environment. You know, I have Ms. Cunningham, Mr. Seibert, I have Dr. Colton Ecker, and I have all of my bosses. We support each other every day in this work, and you've done the same thing. So thank you for making us so proud of you. Thank you for pursuing your dreams and not stopping, even though it was really, really hard. And now, I could talk all night, I love you. I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Colton Ecker, and he is going to announce the names. And we're going to ask you to come up and come to the microphone and talk to us about your research. How does that sound? Great, are parents ready for that? Everybody in the crowd ready for that?
So Tim, they're going to speak over there.
Yeah.
And then come to us after you.
Is this on?
Let's make sure that, Jen, can you check that microphone? Thank you. So we will have them line up too. I guarantee you can take a proud picture at the end as well. So we're going to start with Carolina Bucara.
I studied the effects of microplastic on nesting loggerhead sea turtles.
Zachary Berkowitz.
I created a machine learning model to identify self-diagnosing sentiment in tweets.
And then we have Chloe Bernstein, who will be attending the International Science and Engineering Fair.
I engineered four novel plastic degrading enzymes that can be used to remediate the plastic waste found at our oceans, landfills, and in recycling facilities.
Ethan Cherry.
I explored the role of TV parasocial or once out of relationships on the wellbeing of young LGBT adults.
Massimo Kalella Albino.
I studied how graphene can be used to make solar cells efficient and inexpensive.
Rohini Das, a Regeneron scholar.
I designed and developed the brain app to non-invisibly quantify and human subjects' mental health.
Abby Eichelbetsch.
I studied the impact of the immune system, specifically map stages, on the success of a nerve-specific hydrogel treatment to help repair peripheral damage.
Alaska Fairbanks.
I examined the relationship between air pollution exposure and stroke incidence in New York State.
Eliza Hammond.
I investigated the role of anti-NMDAR1 autoantibodies on the development of psychiatric disorders.
Callie Higgins.
I explored how health disparities impact the utilization of palliative care for patients with amyotrophic lateral sclerosis or ALS.
Ella Jevorsky.
I evaluated the role of the intestinal microbiota in nutrient absorption for patients with anorexia nervosa.
Ethan Kimmel.
I designed and optimized an electric vehicle suspension harvesting mechanism using a piezoelectric material.
Madison Lee.
I did a novel study on people's reactions to mental health influencers on TikTok.
Tyler Lynch.
I studied and found a novel correlation between visual perception and executive functioning through individuals with autism.
Remi Matza, a Regeneron scholar.
I studied the changes in the blood vessels in the retina of patients with age-related macular degeneration.
Samantha Millowitz, a Regeneron scholar and attending the International Science and Engineering Fair.
I identified two proteins involved in tissue damage to help develop a reparative treatment for traumatic brain injuries.
Lindsay Miller, a Regeneron scholar.
I uncovered the significant and emerging role of circadian rhythms on the way that we respond to the light.
Peter Ma.
I used a virtual clinical trial to investigate a novel method of prescribing cancer therapy.
Kayla Newman.
I evaluated the potential feasibility of using CAR-T cell therapy in acute island leukemia.
Caleb Pelopelou.
I created a novel generative artificial intelligence to create synthetic images of brain tumors, which helps neurosurgeons identify and treat rare brain cancers.
Samantha Shavitt, a Regeneron scholar.
I investigated a novel way to open the blood-brain barrier to increase drug delivery to brain tumors.
Emily Stangle, attending the International Science and Engineering Fair.
I studied neurodegenerative disorder suppression seen through molecular variants in whale genes.
And Max Tittlebaum.
That's for lab.
There are two treatment options for using the rare tumor-afecting blood vessels.
And once again, let's thank the teachers, Stephanie, Caroline, and... Parents want to come up and get a picture here? We'll let them pose for a moment.
Yes, teachers too. Teachers, come on up. Come on photo. Okay. Squeeze together. Yes. You get it?
Got it.
All right, everybody face forward. Smiles for cheese.
Perfect, thank you.
We thank you all so much. And we know that you all are in the middle of AP exams and sports and internships and all that good stuff, so we're going to take a break. You can say hello to everyone, and then we'll resume. So thank you all so much for being here. And Marissa, Nicole, and Abby, what do you think? Are you ready? Okay. And you don't have to feel obligated to stay for the rest of the meeting either, but we're happy you're here. Okay, we're back, and we're going to go to unfinished business, review of policies. Send it to Tim.
Okay. Thank you. So we have a few policies to review. We first have a second read on the policy, the field trips, policy 4531. We had a discussion about it at the last board meeting. So just to remind the board, we revised this policy that originally dealt with field trips and non-sanctioned trips. And then we also added a section on excursions, which is defined as trips that occur outside of the calendar year, which means in the summer months, generally July and August. And then we also added a section on medication and a section on safety. And we had a discussion at the last board meeting about under excursions. There was one section of, if you're following along, you can look at the fourth bullet, under excursions, and the second sub-bullet, which talks about travel advisories and the responsibility of the district tour coordinator. And we brought this back to the policy committee. One of the board members in our discussion was around having parent responsibility around checking that as well. So we wrote a sentence and also ran it by our legal counsel, who thought it was a good line to put in. And what we added to that last, that second bullet is parents are encouraged to monitor travel websites and carefully consider the risks of such travel when making decisions about their child's participation in an excursion. So we thought that would put that notice there for parents as well to check that. And again, we revised this policy so that we can continue to provide opportunities for our students to enrich their curricular and extracurricular learning opportunities. So that's a second read. If there's any questions on that one, and then I'll go through the first reads. So for first reads, we have policy 1050, annual district election and budget vote. This was just a technical change under item number one. There was a change at some point in the law, and our policy just needed to be updated to reflect it. So it notes where there's the number of petitions that have to be submitted is either a minimum of 25 or 2% of eligible voters who voted in the previous election or whichever is greater. We had 5% in the old policy, so we changed that to 2%. And we made small technical changes, some word changes in the policy. And that's the only change of that policy.
And the second policy for first read tonight is pandemic planning. Which recently, not too long ago, we had adopted it in June of 2021. And as we all know, pandemic planning, in case there is ever a contagious disease outbreak, that we are very well-prepared moving forward. There's just one minor change in this, but just as a refresher in terms of what this plan outlines in terms of our responsibilities from the district role, is to ensure that we're implementing infection prevention controls, such as reminding everyone of good hygiene habits, making sure that we're following federal, local, and state protocols in terms of cleaning and sanitizing, and also that we, when and if we had to follow an emergency plan due to a pandemic, that we, our protocols are in line with Section 27(c) of Labor Law, which informs employees in terms of their work shifts, ensuring that we procure the appropriate protective materials and supplies for them. And then again, as I mentioned, the one change in this particular policy was ensuring that the student learning and the plan that we have in place for student learning, if we were to go remote, is in fact outlined in our district safety plan, which we did revise to ensure that the pandemic planning piece in terms of student learning was also included in the district safety plan, which is our public-facing document on our website. So that was the only major change in that plan. Policy.
And then one more, which is policy 0210, goals for instructional programs. So we toyed around with this policy for a little bit in policy committee, and we tried revising it, but it seemed sort of fruitless to do so. So we're recommending that this policy is deleted. And the reason is, when we think about goals for instructional program, we find ourselves going regularly, as you know and hear me say regularly, which is our mission statement, is our guide. And then every year, our administrative team writes their own goals based on our mission and the work we do at our administrative retreat every year. We have that curriculum conversation with you in October. And that work is fluid and seems to be a better way of matching our curriculum and our instructional programs to current and relevant information, which is our mission and then the goals that our administrators work on annually. So we thought to try to put all that into a goals and instructional programs policy seemed like it wasn't meaningful and that it would easily get outdated. And then a policy that drives sort of these types of instructional goals didn't seem to make sense, because then it might not be as fluid as we would want goals for instruction to be and that regular conversation that we have with the board and alignment to board goals. So we felt like, let's keep our mission statement as the driving force and then our regular conversations with the board aligned to our board goals. So I did a search in the state of other policies, and it seems to be this policy doesn't exist in too many districts anymore. Seems to be an outdated policy. And the ones I did find seem to have very localized, specific things that they put in here. So that is our recommendation from the policy committee, is to delete this policy.
So thank you so much to the policy committee and all the hard work that goes into the review of policies. So can I ask for a motion to approve a first read, 1050, annual district election and budget vote, 8131, pandemic planning, a first read and the elimination of 0 to 10 goals for instructional planning, and approve a second read of 4531 field trips and excursions? Can I add a motion, please? A second?
Second.
All those in favor?
If you're not in favor, why?
Oh, sorry?
Then we should do them individually.
Do them individually?
Just do the first reads and then do the second.
Okay, so who's in favor of the first reads, please? And any nays for the second read?
Any nays?
Nays.
You're in favor, so we'll do the favor. So nays is that. And all those in favor of the second read? Okay, we'll just make a notation. So we had six yeses and one no. Okay, thank you. Moving on to special report, budget hearing five. Are we going to Kelly? Yeah? Okay.
All right. So the final review of the proposed budget for next year, I'm going to just quickly review it. I encourage you to go onto the district website, Bobcat TV, for all the other presentations as well as the videos with a little more detail in each of these categories. In terms of tonight, just as a review, our budget increase for next year is two point eight seven, eight seven percent, excuse me, increase of two million seven hundred and eighty-five thousand seven hundred and twenty-five and a total proposed budget of ninety-nine million seven hundred and twenty-five thousand and thirty-seven dollars. Here's a review of the tax rate increases estimated for next year. If you take a look at the March twenty-eighth presentation, goes into a lot of detail in terms of how these rates are calculated and the various historical rates changes on a yearly basis. But the town of North Castle has an increase of two point six one percent, Newcastle two point eight two percent, Bedford eight point three four, and a decrease in Mount Pleasant of three point seven eight percent. So in two weeks, our budget vote takes place at HCC from six-thirty to nine P M. PTSA is going to be providing some curbside babysitting, so if you'd like to come and park so they can watch your children, then you can go and vote. Thank you for that, PTSA. Here's a look at the ballot. So this is the front side, the budget side. It's yes or no. And the back is the two board seats that are available, or two incumbent board members are running for the two vacancies. And then finally, keep a lookout for the budget newsletter. You should receive that six to seven days before the vote. Provides you a little more information in terms of the budget, absentee ballots and all that information. If you have any questions, please feel free to shoot me an email, take a look at the website and the presentations. And then that's it.
Thank you, Kelly. And just please encouraging the community to come out and cast your vote. We have over eleven thousand potential voters in the community and on a year like this, we may get four or five hundred people who come out to vote. So I really do encourage you to come, be aware of what is included in this budget through budget presentations. Thank you so much to the parents who have come to the principal's coffees and anyone who has been logged into these Board of Education meetings. Thank you for being concerned, aware, and go out and cast your vote. Thank you so much.
Thank you to Kelly and staff for putting all the, working so hard on this budget this year. And again, just to echo what Jen said, please come out to vote. It's very, very important. Okay, moving on, tonight we have new business. We have a special presentation report for Amy Taylor on the data privacy annual report. Thanks.
All right. Good evening. Thank you for having me today. Good evening. Thank you for having me this evening and taking a little of your time. I know it's been a busy evening, but I wanted to go over some of the data privacy initiatives that we have going on in this way.
Andrew, can you just try to raise that to you?
Just turn the mic this way.
Yeah, turn the mic, yeah.
In front of you. Is that better?
So much better.
Okay.
Perfect. Thank you.
So this presentation is part of our education law two D. Presentations required as part of education law two D. Ed Law Two D was passed around twenty fourteen, actually, when implemented in twenty nineteen. And it is based on the NIS eight hundred dash one seventy-one standards, which definitely where there's fourteen different families in those standards and a hundred and ten different categories that we are engaged to monitor in the district. The main goal of NIS standards and Ed Law Two D is to make sure that we are securing PII, personally identifiable information on students, and make sure that we protect it from theft, neglect, loss, or insecure practices. There's a whole host of cyber attacks and security initiatives that are out there. These are some of the bigger attacks that you see in networks right now. Of course, intrusion attempts are the highest with two point five trillion attempts a year, which is trying to penetrate the network through group forces and a variety of different methods. But the fastest growing cybersecurity concern out there is ransomware. Ransomware twenty twenty-one grew a hundred and fifty-one percent, three hundred and four million ransomware attacks. It's probably one of the more expensive attacks that you can have on a district or an organization. So I wanted to take you through ransomware attacks, explain a little bit more about what that is and how we're protecting the district from that. In general, a ransomware attack starts by having some sort of malicious code that's installed on a hardware device, either a server or a desktop or a laptop. That can be installed via some sort of malicious email, clicking on something inside of an email that shouldn't be clicked on, an infected drive, malicious website that has something in it that automatically installs this code in the background. That code, oh, sorry, one second. That code then sits on the devices and slowly propagates itself. So this ransomware, I'm going to tell you that there's hundreds and hundreds of different types of ransomware, but it sits on your servers and it slowly sort of finds other files to propagate itself onto. At one point, and that could be in one day or it could be in one year or more, it is then given a command to isolate and encrypt those files. Those files are encrypted until the owner of the files pays some sort of ransom or, and then they're given a code to unencrypt those files. In general, that's the way ransomware works. There's lots of different variations. There's a man in the middle sort of attack of ransomware where the ransomware is actually sending data out to the owner of the malicious code to give them more information on the district. There's a whole variety of different flavors to that sort of ransomware attack. Ransomware didn't, wasn't really an issue in schools up until recently. There's a lot of debate about why that might be, why schools have become more of a target. But in twenty twenty-one, nine hundred and fifty-four schools and colleges in the U.S. were attacked, impacting nine hundred and fifty thousand students, costing about three point five billion dollars to those institutions. If you can see that New York, being the redness on the left-hand side there, is often attacked, although it's not necessarily the one that's most financially impacted. See, even here, Florida is more financially impacted. We do have a lot of securities inside of New York, so even though it has a lot of attacks, we don't actually have as much of a, it's not as actually impactful as it is in other states. This is just the last couple of months, some of the larger scale ransomware attacks that we've seen across the country. Nantucket, most recently, just a few weeks, or a few days ago, week ago, Rochester Public Schools in Minnesota, Los Angeles, which everyone heard about a few months ago, Jefferson County in Alabama, and Arizona Public School, Dick County White School as well. The common thing that these all have is it required the schools to shut down their schools, loss of instruction, reputational damage from the school, loss of sensitive data, extensive cost to the insurance providers and occasionally the schools themselves. And they become a target of repeat once a school district is, has a successful, successful in part of the bad actors, attempt like this, they become a target for future attacks. I could know, I could not fit every type of ransomware attack that's out there. This is just a sampling of the types of ransomware that's available out there. And the issue with all of these are, every one of them is treated differently. They impact your network differently, the way we would, we would approach the treatment of those, that ransomware is different. So every one of them has a slightly unique approach to them. And ransomware is just one of the many things that we actually are working in cybersecurity to try to protect the school from. There's infinite possibilities of types of malware and malicious cyber attacks. And then when you compound that with the wealth of technology that we have, there's an infinite possible cybersecurity threats that are available right now. And of course, we all know that the bad actors only need to be right once, but we have to be right a hundred percent of the time. To comment, as you've seen this prior in the past, this is really how we focus our cybersecurity approach. We look at the physical, the administrative, and the technical approach to cybersecurity. Physical is where we, how do we have access to the devices, access to the servers, the technology that we, that may be impacted. For this, we've actually relocated a lot of our servers to secure cloud-based centers, which have far more security, both technical and physical than we could have here inside of our district. Technical, I'm going to speak, let's go to the next slide. Technical, I've showed you some of these one more quick. I've showed you a lot of these in the past, the technical solutions. We actually have a very strong technical approach to cybersecurity. All of the areas which we wouldn't want to cover and you'd want to see covered inside of your organization, we really have a good cover of our technical approach to cybersecurity. What we're working on now is our administrative controls. Those administrative controls look at policies, management, how the management workflow happens, incident response, and training. So this is one of the things that we're doing this year that's new. It's actually been vetting for the past year, a variety of defensive auditing software that looks at all of those hundred and ten controls and we evaluate each of them on a variety of indicators. So this software is by SignMetrix and it's actually, we really like the approach of this because it was actually created in combination with technical folks, with also Paris Beach, a law firm who specializes in making sure that all of the controls are done to not only a technical specs, but a legal spec as well. There's lots of different ways you can onboard this type of tool. We chose to onboard it using the ransomware protocol, which means we look at the ransomware controls first and then move on from there. When you do an audit like this, it's not something like an audit you may think of, you do it in a week and you're done. This is a continuous process. So it might take us a year and a half, even two years to complete the entire audit cycle. And then we just start again. We just keep going through it again. And the goal is just to take all these controls and continuously get better and better and better. The other area we've been working in is creating an incident response workflow. We started working on incident response plan and working some of the experts out there. And what we realized is that plan is so static that it really doesn't meet the needs of an organization anymore. What a plan does is it says, well, if we get a ransomware attack, we're going to do A, B, and C. The problem is, every ransomware is completely different. So how do we create that? We can't create a hundred different ransomware strategies. So what we focused on instead of creating a plan is creating a workflow. And we created a workflow that we can put any, any cyber incident inside of, whether that is I lost a piece of paper in the trash can that might have had secure data in it, or it is we have a ransomware that took down an entire server. We can put all of them inside of here and work them through a process that ensures that we're going to make sure all of the areas of the process are covered. And you know what each of the team members along the way are going to be doing. So we've really been working on this and working with some cybersecurity experts to really make sure that that is in line with what we need to do. And we really do think, and actually some other places are starting to take this on now as a, as a potential way of looking at incident planning, instead of trying to come up with a plan for everything where you can, because it changes every other day in the cybersecurity realm. Another thing we've been working on is this, this whole campaign we have around be a cybersecurity hero. So really cybersecurity starts with me, with you, each of you, and with everyone that works here and goes here and has access to any piece of technology. So we really focused on data privacy starts with you. And we've been doing this through a variety of ways, through training, through email campaigns, through working in faculty meetings, any possible way we can sort of approach this and get this out through our learning communities. We've been focused on the cybersecurity hero works, hero campaign. Last year, we started InfoSec IQ and we've really been leveraging that as part of this campaign. At superintendent's day, we have about forty-seven-five faculty and staff that went through this training and we focused on all the main areas of cybersecurity. Malware, mobile security, password security, physical security, removable media, safe web browsing, and social engineering. And we really wanted to make sure that everyone had a solid foundation on cybersecurity. Last year I came here and I talked to you about, we started our first phishing campaign. And I told you at that time, we didn't do so well. We actually had about a forty-one percent phishing rate at that time. And that was something we knew we really needed to focus on. So we did. We have been doing monthly campaigns around each of these topic areas. So each month we pick one of these topic areas and we send out three to five email campaigns to everybody in our organization. I'm sure you've probably received them as well and had to respond to them. Through this campaign, we've actually been able to see a dramatic decrease in that phishing rate. So we went from forty-one percent to seven percent phishing rate this year we have, which is actually far below the industry standard of about thirteen. One of the areas that we are working on this year is actually this right here. It's good to not click on the phishing attempt, but it's better to actually report that so that we can do something about it. So we're really working on this area right here, this year, right now. That's our next area of this. Because when you, when you actually report that phishing attempt, it allows us to go in and take that email and quarantine it and take it out of everyone's inbox. So it actually could prevent someone else that was neglectful and maybe clicked on it from doing that because we are actually being proactive and taking it out. What's up next? This year, what we're working on is automating our staff provisioning. Actually, that's going to be going live in the next couple of weeks. We've got that almost complete. A multi-factor authentication, I know you've heard this before, we've been working on multi-factor authentication. We've got it up and running for administration and technical support staff and actually for date people. So for example, anyone that does substituting will get a thumb, thumb drive along with a passcode and they need both of them to be able to access our network. So we've been using some multi-factor inside the organization, but it hasn't been rolled out to everybody. Partly because doing that inside of an organization like a school is really, really difficult and no one has a great solution. We're still looking for a solution because we could turn on multi-factor for Gmail tomorrow, but turning that on without having something for e-school and other products doesn't really make a lot of sense. We'd be training someone on something that hopefully tomorrow we're going to change to something better. So we're really actually working on that and we're working with the lower ransom rate. We think we are close to a solution for that. File encryption, we're going to start deploying. Google has released a file encryption protocol for their system and we're going to be launching that as soon as Google rolls that out. We've been using their, their system that they have now, but the new one that they're coming out with is much more advanced. We're going to be launching the audit. We're going to be working on a continuity of service plan. We know from, from the pandemic, some of the areas that we can, we can, we need to work in, we've actually addressed many of them. For example, mobile computing. Every device here in the district is now a mobile device so that we can take that device and leave the district we need to and continue our work. There's other areas of continuity of service that we're going to start addressing. What about phones? If we could, how long could we be without phones if we didn't, if we didn't have them? How long can we be without internet services? Things like that, we're going to really sharpen up that continuity of service plan. And then workflow software. We have a lot of complex workflow, for example, onboarding of staff and students. It's very complex. That information goes through a dozen or more people's hands through the process of being onboarded. So we're going, we've been looking at workflow software for the past year and we finally found one that we really think is going to meet our needs. And we're going to start launching that this year as well. And so that will automate the process of workflow. So everything is checked along the way and there's a, there's an audit trail for every piece of that workflow process so we know where that data is along the way. Any other questions?
Andrew, how are our security mechanisms that we have in place effective by when kids are using a VPN as opposed to being on a consortium network?
So VPNs are hard to use on our devices, but if they're using a personal device and they're using a VPN on that, they are, it's basically tunneling a hole through the network and that does lead to vulnerability. Now, there is, there is safeguards in place that they can't install anything from that VPN on our devices. So anything that gets put on our devices from an outside thumb drive or a computer or phone, anything that's uploaded there instantly gets scanned and, and we look for vulnerabilities inside of that, that code. That being said, though, it is, it is, it is a very large hole that no organization can really prevent totally. Mainly because I can, I can block a VPN product, but that VPN product that has a thousand different sites that you use is, you can't, you can't keep track of it. And they change it every twenty minutes. They add new ones.
Andrew, how common is it for organizations, school districts, to be the victims of this ransomware all the way to the point of being locked out of their systems? And are there, I know obviously prevention is what we're going for here, but what are the, what are the solutions once you're down that path? People are not paying ransom so good. What's the solution to that? Or are there?
So one of the reasons that they think that ransomware has actually taken off in schools is because a few years ago, insurance companies started paying ransom. So a few, four or five years ago, insurance companies started paying the ransom. And so of course, people, they take note of that and they start doing more attacks towards schools. So the theory now is, and my theory would be, to never pay the ransom inside of our organization. And we have safeguards to protect us so we don't have to. We have multiple redundancies of our, of every file in the district that goes back that is not only offloaded here, but also in two other locations so that, and on tape drive as well. So we have got a variety of different backups of all of our files. So we have got a variety of different backups of all of our files. And we actually had a ransomware attack about 2016. We had a ransomware attack. And we were able to delete the files, upload the files within 24 hours, and actually, it was a small attack, just saying we caught it early. There was only a few hundred files that were affected by it, but we were able to replace those files with backups. Our system now is even better than it was back then. But to your point, there are districts that have had to shut down their schools and rebuild their entire networks because they weren't prepared. Now, I'm not going to put that, that somebody does happen, but it is something to be even close by here. Monroe Woodbury being one of them. If you look up Monroe Woodbury, they had a very severe attack.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you so much.
All right, thank you all.
Thank you, Andrew. It's really helpful.
Thank you.
Okay, that brings us to 12.2, the WPSBA 2023-24 proposed budget, and board of directors nominating slate and ballot. Is that you, Kelly?
I can do it. Go to the third. Go. So once a year, Westchester County School Board Association puts out their budget, and it gets voted on by their members, which are the 54 districts in Westchester and Potomac County. And so in May, later in May, later this month, there'll be a meeting where we get to vote. So this would be to authorize, likely me, unless everybody else wants to do it, to go to that meeting and then to cast our vote. It's for two things. It's for the budget, which is projected to be a 3%, which I don't know, Kelly, I know the range is somewhere between $31 and 400, sorry, $141 to pay on the size of the district.
It's like $120.
$120, okay. So it'd be a $120 increase, and then it's for the slate. So it's for officers, it's for the continuing directors, for new directors, and for nominees for the nominating committee, and that's all on the attached sheet. Full disclosure, I'm on the slate for officers, but that's what this is for. So I guess if anybody has any questions.
As president.
Well, if anybody has any questions, comments. Otherwise, you can call for a motion that is to approve our voting for the slate and for the budget.
We have to approve you as our nominee.
I think that's right, unless something by any chance happens and somebody else does it. So I guess it could be me or somebody if they suffer me.
Okay, so can I have a motion to approve the proposed budget and board of directors nominating slate and ballot for the WPSBA 2023-24? Make your second. All those in favor? Any names? Okay, good. Okay, that brings us to staff reports and to our superintendent.
Thanks. You have me on the race. All right, you can.
All right, well, as if we didn't have enough exciting things to talk about tonight, I want to start with our highlights tonight. As you learned, Samantha Milowitz has the U.S. Presidential, she is a U.S. Presidential Scholar, and advanced and become the semifinalist in this program. She's one of 628 semifinalists chosen for more than 5,000 candidates. Just congratulations to Samantha. I feel like we're talking about her every week, and I'm so happy to do so. She'll be recognized during National Recognition Program, and awarded, they get awarded the medallion each June. So congratulations to Samantha. And Gavin Javorsky, the Con Edison Player of the Week and Great Kid. Congratulations to Gavin, Varsity Boys Lacrosse. This award was given on April 17th, and this is given to an individual for outstanding achievement inside and outside of the classroom and on the field. Congrats to Gavin. We had our TriM Music Honor Society inductees. It was a fantastic evening. We had 20 students who were inducted, and they also inducted Evan Harwitz as a teacher, an honorary member. And we also had orchestra, chorus, concerts that night, just pretty fantastic. And on the next page, you'll see the TriM Music Honor Society inductees, of which there are many. And on the next page, we had Mu Alpha Theta inductees. I was not able to attend that event, I had a conflict, but they had 47 high school students inducted into Mu Alpha Theta. Congratulations to, it was great. Tim was there, of course. Yes, and if you look on the next page, you will see all of their names there. So congratulations to our students who were inducted on that night. Next page also. And we had Athletic Signing Day, super fun event on Tuesday, April 25th. We celebrated six students who signed to take their talents to the next level in college. Thank you to Matt Allen, who facilitated that, Brett Alcantara for all the work he does for that, and Rob Gustakna. And on the next page, you'll see who they are. We had Justin Wagner, who's going to play at Johnson and Wales in tennis. Gavin Javorsky, who's going to play lacrosse at Colgate. George Jalaj, who's going to play at SUNY Cortlandt for football. Sean Siegel at the University of Richmond for lacrosse. Colin McManus, fantastic, is going to play at Endicott College for lacrosse. And Anthony Kozak at Marymount University for lacrosse. We had quite a few lacrosse players out there this year. Congrats to all of you, and that was a super fun event. And thank you to the boosters for supporting that day event as well, and everything you did for the kids. Speech and debate team update. Here is the update. So congratulations for an impressive showing at the Tournament of Champions on April 15th and 16th, and Aiden made it to the semifinals in original oratory. Allegra finished sixth overall in oral interpretation. Congratulations to you both. It's pretty amazing. Oh, look at that. Ashley Stangle. We have Global Scholars News. They had the Living History Project from the Holocaust and Human Rights Education Center, and these Global Scholar students presented the project they created, and they had interviews and collaborations with children of Holocaust survivors and sophomores Abby Rondo, Ashley Stangle, and junior Ariana Garcia. They made Byron Hills proud with their professional presentations and their creative projects. And more Global Scholars News, the Hunger Guys make headlines. These are juniors Billy Gillespie, Mark, I'm sorry, Marco Scali, and Michael Solo. They were showcased in The Examiner for their work in forming the Hunger Guys, a team dedicated to solving food insecurity in Westchester County. And the AP Art Show, I just die and go to heaven at this. Every single year that is here, it was a huge success. We all attended, and just everything from AP Studio Art Photography, AP Graphic Design, AP 3D Design. Thank you so much to all of our art teachers for all the time that they take to put into presenting the student work in such an amazing way. And I know that this is old news, but I didn't do it at the time, and I just have to congratulate our fourth grader Hudson Greenstein, because I don't know if you saw News 12, but he started his own pop-up business, Yala Matzah Pizza, and this was generated, when he was at Nick's Pizza one night, and he was inspired to create a matzah-based pizza. So he got to work tweaking his recipe and starting a business. He had an ad in Bon Appetit magazine. And so for Passover, along with Nick's owner in town, Anthony Brown, they served matzah pizzas. They donated the matzah from Streit's, and the business officially launched March 13th, and there's a complete article here. I just think that that's pretty amazing. That's so cool. And these great results at the Tri-County Science and Technology Fair. We keep hearing about these 21 seniors participating in the PepsiCo 2023, and announcing third-place winners Eliza Hammond and Ethan Kimmel, also Tyler Lynch and Samantha Milowitz. And then first place Chloe Bernstein, Ethan Cherry, and Rohini Das, also Ella Javorsky. And then the top achievers, the three to five projects, will go on to Stan East New York State Science Congress Competition, Elvis June in Syracuse. I just can't get over where all of our kids are going, and that will be Chloe Bernstein, Ethan Cherry will advance on as competitors, and Rohini Das and Samantha Milowitz as alternates. Just pretty amazing and cool. And music in the parks. Okay, although it wasn't in the park, it was supposed to be at Great Adventure, but it rained. So they moved it to Middletown, New York, and our students, our music students, went there to compete, and the bonus prize after was, I guess, they all went to Dave and Buster's and had a nice afternoon. But while they were there competing, they received superior ranking, which is the highest for all three of our ensembles, band, orchestra, and choir. All three ensembles placed first in our A class, and the String Orchestra got best overall in the String Orchestra category. Pretty amazing. And I don't think this is last, no, this is not last. Second to last, come this weekend, on Saturday, 2:00 and 7:00 shows, we are going to see Willy Wonka Jr., put on by Wampus Elementary School, and that is taking place at the H.C. Crittendon Middle School. Pretty good tickets. Have your tickets. And last but not least, there you go. Go Bobcats. Congratulations to our boys' baseball team on a big win, and congratulations to Coach Scott Saunders, who had his 200th win in Byram Hills baseball in his history. Congratulations to Scott. He's so proud of this team, he's so proud of the work he does, and we are so proud that he is going to be joining us as the Assistant Athletic Director. So I think that this was a bittersweet 200 for him. And that is all I have to report for tonight. Go Bobcats.
Thank you, Jen. That's amazing. Wonderful to see what all the kids are doing, and our staff as well. Tim?
Great, thank you. And it's a good segue from Hudson's entrepreneurialship project to an update on our entrepreneurship program, and I hope Hudson will be looking forward to that course at the high school. So we're coming to the close of our first year of startup, and last week or two weeks ago, we had our academic pitch. So that was where all 17 teams presented their project ideas to five expert judges, again, parent volunteers, and I want to thank our parents for spending the day watching 17 teams present their ideas. So they presented, the kids present for 10 minutes, the judges interrogate them, and I do say it's an interrogation for five minutes, ask hard questions. And then at the end of that, they selected four teams who will go forward to the final pitch, which will take place on May 22nd in the evening. That's open to our public, so I hope you'll attend, and we'll be advertising that soon. We also, all the teams will be having a display, and the public will be able to go around and listen to their pitches and vote for a wild card. So whoever gets the most votes can go on that stage that night. So you'll want to show up and support your friends, and there'll be five teams that present. We'll have a new panel of judges who will come there, and they will recognize one team who will be able to submit to the regional conference by the following week. So it's a short turnaround time where they have to make a two-minute video of their pitch and send it off, and hopefully they'll get selected to compete. And well, there'll be another team that's selected to go to a regional pitch night as well. So we're excited about the end. I want to thank our parent volunteers, it's been a lot of time. I want to thank our mentors and coaches who've worked with the teams, and they're really invested in the success of their kids, and it's been a great experience. Already, from all the parent volunteers, we're starting to gather input and ideas for revising and making some changes for next year. So come out on May 22nd and see our teams compete. Be a great night. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Let's see, any board reports? Just want to again remind everyone to come out and vote. Very important. Yes. Yes, and this Friday is, yes, well, maybe there's a report from, oh, my mic, sorry. Is there, who attended the DHGF meeting this week? Yes, you can just announce.
Yes, so we're here to make sure that everybody attends the Fiesta on this Friday night. And to go ahead and support the DHGF efforts. There's also an auction going on right now, it's online, so you can take part in that or also it'll be there.
And I've already placed a bid, so let's get moving.
And there's a rafting as well this year.
That's great.
And I just have a quick report on the PTA meeting, which was this morning. It's amazing, they're already starting to think about next year, so they have their officers slated and starting to plan budgeting, and I think they have a magic show upcoming, which sold out in like just a couple of days, in two, three days, they sold out for this auditorium here, so a lot of good things going on there. I think this year has worked well, just having this new setup where we have holidays on to the PTA. Do you agree that it's been really good to be in those meetings and understand what they're doing, see how we could be of assistance?
Great, and I like the way it worked out with people sharing, most people sharing the whole, yeah.
It's so many meetings that I think it would have been hard for one person to.
Yes.
Yeah.
Good. No current ongoing spots as committee members. Okay, and anybody else, any board reports? Okay, communication to the board, we have any? So here are none. And can I get a motion to approve the board minutes from the April 11th, 2023, and the April 18th, 2023? So I think.
Which is going several weeks.
Yes, let's do the first one, because you're.
Am I abstaining? You're abstaining. You're abstaining from the 11th.
Okay, so I'll abstain from the 11th. So can I say a motion to approve the minutes for the 11th?
Someone.
Okay, all those in favor? And one abstention myself. And then can I have a motion to approve the 18th?
Sorry.
And the second.
The second.
Okay, all those in favor? And Lori abstains from that one. Great, and I guess that, yeah, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Someone.
All those in favor? Have a wonderful night. Thank you so much.
Come out and vote.
Yes, come out and vote. Okay. Thanks, Mike. Cool. Okay, just adding on, can I ask for a motion to re-enter executive session to discuss 4.4 contract matter, individual employee, second. All those in favor? Thank you so much.